For Wednesday, October 14, 2020, at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held fully remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A, Section 20. We'll move right into our agenda for this evening. I should ask if anyone other than GCTV is recording tonight? Can you please identify yourself? Might need to unmute. Okay, hearing none. We'll go right into the agenda. Member Johnson Musad, would you do a roll call for us, please?
I will. Members, please unmute yourselves. Member Karen?
Here.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Here.
Member Hollins? Secretary Johnson, I'm here. Chair Poiety?
Here.
Member Hollins is having a hard time getting in. Just letting you know.
Here now. Oh. Member Hollins, if you could unmute yourself and just note your presence.
Here, thank you, Susan.
Member Wall?
Here.
Mayor Weedigartner?
I'm here.
All right, we're all present and accounted for.
Awesome. So we'll call the meeting order officially at 6:01 PM. And we do have a set of minutes to approve this evening. That's the draft minutes from the last meeting on October 1, 2020. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Those, Member Hollins and Member Johnson Musad, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. We'll go to a roll call vote to approve, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weedigartner?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Wonderful. So we'll move now into the third section of the meeting, public comment. So the way we work public comment is we will first take public comment from folks who have identified themselves on the WebEx in the chat. Identify yourself by name and that you'd like to make a public comment. I'll give further instructions once we're ready to go. And if you're unable to do that because you've joined us by phone, that's fine. At the end of the virtual public comment, we will take comments by phone. We do give time for people to make themselves known, but please also don't be shy if you're ready now to type it in. Go ahead and type it in. And then a further note about public comment. Let's see how this goes. We've had extensive public comment already at multiple meetings on the subject that is under new business, Item C, anti-racism and SRO funding. We have not had much that waivers from the folks who are looking for us to implement anti-racism education in the schools and to use SRO funding for that. I will limit the folks who are on the line, as is the chair's discretion in public comment. If you have a contrary view, you don't want us to do anti-racism education, or you don't want us to use the funding for the school resource officer, you may comment. I will also give folks who are on the line and planning to make comment in support of Item C on the new business agenda, time to pick one person to be their spokesperson, and that one person may comment this evening. This is not to limit anyone, but we haven't heard any new information. We've gotten dozens of emails. We've gotten dozens of folks commenting, and we need to actually get into our agenda. So, public comment, we will move into it now. Anyone in the chat?
Yes, we have several, starting with Lucy Khan.
Lucy Khan, can you state your name for us? If it has an unusual spelling, please spell it. Let us know what town you live in, and you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Lucy Khan, L-U-C-Y-K-A-H-N. I live in Greenfield, Massachusetts. And I was calling, I'm logging in and commenting in this meeting to support the racial justice programs that you just mentioned. So yes, I'm, you know, joining the chorus of voices that's calling for allocating funding to the racial justice youth programs, such as Community Actions Ongoing and Successful Stand Up and Stand Together Against Racism programs. And I'm also here to urge the council to establish an advisory committee to listen to and address the issue of racism in schools. Given that you just said that many people have been expressing similar views, I will hold my time there, but I'm glad to be in such good company in our town of people who are trying to make anti-racist education a priority. And I'm commenting here as a former educator myself.
Thank you, Lucy. Okay, so we've had our one comment on school resource officer and anti-racism. Do we have anyone else on any other topics that would like to speak? Go ahead, Member Johnson Musad, let us know.
The folks haven't identified in the chat what the topic is of their open comment. The next person who's requested to speak is Gina Duncan, or Jenna.
Jenna Duncan, are you here to speak about something other than anti-racism education?
No.
Then we have to move on to the next person. We have, thank you. Anyone else?
Daniel Pena Chadie, and apologies for butchering names. I'm just trying to read off of the chat.
Yeah, I was about to mention anti-racism too, but I guess we're moving on.
Did you have anything different than what we've already heard? The first speaker was very succinct and pretty much identical to what we've heard before. Do you have anything different to add?
Um, no, not really. Just, I would like anti-racism program as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Daniel, can you spell, oh, Member Johnson Musad, do you have the spelling of his name in the chat?
I do, yes. It's Daniel, standard spelling, P-E-N-A, with the N as in Nancy, dash, C-H-A-D-E-E.
Thank you.
The next person on the list is Chelsea Field.
Chelsea Field.
Hi, I'm just here to echo Lucy's sentiment, so I don't want to take up more time.
You have nothing different to add? Thank you very much. What town do you live in, Chelsea?
Greenfield.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Helen Param.
Hi, everyone, I'm Helen Param. I live in Greenfield. I am an alum from Greenfield Public Schools, and I wanted to support the anti-racism programs in Greenfield Public Schools.
Thank you. Anyone else that has a different topic?
We don't know the topics. The next person on the list is Doug S.
Hi, Doug Selwyn from Greenfield, and I support what everybody else has said. But, 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 I'm not done.
Okay.
I do have another topic which is related, which, which has to do with the future hiring of superintendent and curriculum coordinator.
Please, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I want to make sure that the, the people who are, I'm not sure what the process is going to be for hiring, particularly the super, next superintendent, but I want to make sure that the people who are being considered have a strong commitment to racial justice, to economic justice, and that they have demonstrated that, not just said the words, but actually have demonstrated their experience and commitment by action in whatever their previous work has been. So I hope that is a major consideration. I would also like to, another topic has to do with the redistricting committee. I would like to argue strongly that committee fully involve the community, especially and particularly communities of color, in looking at that issue. So, so those two things. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Anyone else?
I have Chelsea Field would like to make a public comment in support of the anti-racism education.
She already commented.
Okay. Then that is all for in the chat at the moment.
Okay. And we will definitely take any public comment from folks who are on the line, who are unable to type into the chat. Don't be shy, just unmute yourself and go ahead. Anyone? Going once, going twice? Okay, so I think we're going to move on to committee reports. We have an extensive agenda tonight, so I am going to refrain from giving a chairperson's report, knowing that I sometimes get worked up and talk for too long. We'll move right into the superintendent's report.
Are you open, Chair, are you open to a question? I know you didn't want to make a, make a speech.
Open to a question for the, for the chair specifically?
Yeah, for the chair's report.
Sure.
Just wondering if you could give an update on the question from last month about the open meeting law concerns and consulting with council on that?
I've started the process of consulting with council. We have a number of things that are in front of that needing that person's attention. And so I do not have a timeline at this point, but he, he has been made aware of what we're looking for, and that process has started. I'm actually going to mute everyone that is not a school committee member at this point. And Superintendent Harper, when you're ready, we are ready for the superintendent's report.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Thanks to everyone that commented, everybody on the line, committee members, mayor, good evening. In my report, which I will keep brief, I want to touch on a few important and exciting updates. The first is our, everybody's favorite topic, food. The home delivery service, as we've talked about before, started on September 16, and in September alone, 43,698 meals were served. Recently, we, this past Friday, we learned that the USDA waiver was granted, so meals will continue to be able to be served by Greenfield Public Schools in the way we have been serving them throughout the rest of the school year. It's really good news. We knew we had it for some period of time, but we were waiting on that federal waiver to be extended to be able to continue that. So I'm very pleased and want to continue to express my appreciation to the committee for your support and also to our food service team, so we can continue that great service. I'd like to give a shout out to the girls' field hockey team for their 7-0 win over Mohawk on Friday, makes them undefeated in our 2-0 season so far. It's, it's a great start to a great season. We're going to talk about athletics later tonight. Everything's a little different now, so I feel like our athletes need our support more than ever, and I wanted to give them a big shout out. One of the most important things that just happened this afternoon is that Governor Baker has refiled a new budget, and this is important because it's our budget, it's our state budget, and it's significantly more spending, including federal dollars, to help save off some of the cuts that would have otherwise been enacted. We're just beginning an analysis of it, since this was literally just released, but it looks to be consistent with the Chapter 70 numbers we got over the summer. So that's good news, and we'll keep you posted. I'm going to defer to somebody else for a moment.
We do have a couple of subcommittee reports. I actually want to go right to city planning and construction. We'll have them go first. You can see it's a little bit different on the agenda. That's just a miscommunication between myself and the person who actually types up the agenda. It shouldn't have been under the subcommittee reports, but they had intended to give one last time, and I rudely didn't allow it. And so either Member Hollins, who I think is our official rep, or Member Wall, or both of you, please, if you would like to give us an update for city planning and construction, go ahead.
I'd like to comment just on the issues before planning and construction that involve the schools. Jeanne Wall chairs the committee, so she has a broader view of the library and the police department and the fire station, and how all of this impacts funding and what's going on. But the primary issue involving the schools is Green River School, which has been shuttered temporarily. And I'll just quickly read you from the minutes of the meeting we had this week. They applied for and received emergency waiver as regards to the timeline. They're still looking at February 2021, that's this year, for installation of the heating system. Berkshire Gas has confirmed access to the gas line. The roof asbestos removal and ceiling work is complete, and now they're just dealing with heating system. And the rest of the talk was about the cost, increased cost of electricity and gas district wide, that they anticipate an increase of about 50%, largely because of all the changes to heating and ventilation, which improves this. And there was, for all, everybody in our schools meeting COVID requirements, there was a question raised that until we reopen schools, had the school district thought about not opening every single building for a few children being served there because of the cost of electricity? It wasn't a request, I was just wondering if we'd thought about that, because the cost of running every single school for habitation and all the air exchange is a very high cost. So that's the main issue involving schools at Green River, and it's still expected that school will be ready for February of this year. Thank you.
Chair? Superintendent Harper, go ahead.
The planning and construction reports are extremely helpful, and the work is really necessary to the rest of the committee. Is it possible to share the minutes from those meetings along with the reports?
Yes, I asked Chair Wall if she would send the last two meetings there. Each time the information about school buildings is articulated, we try to do that clearly. And also, there was an annual report last year described everything going on, including school buildings and that, and I'll ask Chair Wall to make sure those are sent to you to distribute.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Any questions for city planning and construction from school committee members? All right, so hearing none. We'll go back to Superintendent Harper for any additional reporting. No? I'm good. Rose just gave you like a finale there, is that what that was? All right. Other subcommittee reports? I've lost track at this point. Member Wall, please.
I'd like to speak to the redistricting subcommittee. We had our first meeting, and we have decided that in going forward, we need to have a history of, of the different elementary schools, which is where we're going to focus, and look at the criteria that's used for the assignment of students, look at the current assignment of students, and, and study who they are and why they are assigned to that school. Our next meeting is going to be October the 26 at 4 o'clock. If anyone would like to attend it, you are welcome to come, and we welcome public input into our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Wall. Any questions about the, let's call it the redrawing of the district map rather than redistricting? Just, just a pet peeve of mine. Unless we want to invite Lydon to become a regional school district with, I'm kidding, that was a joke, that was a joke. Do we have any questions for Member Wall about that subcommittee? Any other subcommittee reports? All right. So, please, go ahead, Member Collins.
Until this year, we've always had, this has to do with reporting, and reporting has always included a high school student's telling us what's going on at the high school, because we've had high school reps on the school committee. I just wanted to mention that, I miss it.
Thank you. News to me. A follow-up on that. Any other?
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead. Mayor Weedigartner?
I just wanted to say, in regards to your remark about Lydon, before COVID-19 hit, they actually, we had, actually had a meeting scheduled about annexing Lydon with the Lydon people, so I think it was not, we never were able to follow through with it, but it's not an unreasonable thought.
We should put it on the agenda, if we're going to seriously talk about it, absolutely. It has merit, certainly because of what's happening in other school districts around us right now. It definitely has merit, but we would need to actually post it. I shouldn't have joked, I'm sorry. But, yeah.
That's okay.
Yes.
I'm not joking, but it's a subject that may be of interest.
Yep, thank you. Other, any other questions, comments?
I'd just like to support putting the Lydon discussion.
Great.
I think that's good. It came up at planning and construction, and we were talking about fire services, that there had been planning about working.
Yep, absolutely. I've heard that as well. Thank you. All right, let's actually move into what we have as Section 6 of the agenda is unfinished business. Folks who listen in regularly or are with us regularly may recall our meeting on October 1, two weeks ago. We set a time at which we would move into executive session, and anything that we did not finish that was on the new business portion of the agenda, we would finish tonight. We're starting with those items that are rollover from that October 1 meeting. And the first item is rep to the Collaborative for Educational Services Board of Directors, maybe it's just board of directors, maybe it's committee, I'm not sure. But we normally have a school committee member that is our rep on this board of directors. They meet quarterly, I believe, and it is on the last Wednesday of the month. And I do know that they're doing the meetings virtually now. I had originally asked to appoint Member Hollins to this, and she declined the appointment, and they have since contacted us and said, hey, you don't have anyone from your school committee that's attending our meetings. I am unable to attend, or I would, I have another meeting that is at exactly the same time on the same frequency, but I would, before I make an appointment, I would take any self-nominations from school committee members that would be interested in this.
And to given, can you all hear me?
Yes.
So just a little bit of background, I have been the person who was appointed, and I enjoyed taking part of it, and it was really great information related to services that are provided for various populations, particularly people who have educational challenges, I'll say. And the meetings, when they're in person, are held quarterly, and they are either held at their offices in Northampton, or they're held at the transportation bus station thing that we have, and dinner is provided. And I just, I, I, I'm working 20 to 40 hours a week on school committee. I am so overcommitted that I just can't do it. And so I, I really, I've, I've enjoyed it. I would encourage people to become part of it, and I guess that's all. I guess that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or nominations from school committee members?
I have a non-nomination comment, which is just that my husband works for the collaborative, so please don't appoint me to that, because I think it would be a conflict of interest.
Thank you, Glenn.
Can I make a comment?
Member Hollins, go ahead.
Actually, understand collaborative functioning, and the reason I declined was that their meetings in person conflicted with my schedule. With their meeting remotely, and no one has the interest, I couldn't do this.
Oh, I would like to appoint Member Hollins, if there's no other nominations. Was anyone else interested in appointing themselves?
This is Katie. I was going to say I can do it, but if Member Hollins would like to do it, then that's, you can take.
No, I'm fine with someone else doing it. I was just going to say.
I second Member Hollins.
I think it's an excellent fit for Member Hollins, and I'm delighted that your schedule has changed. And Katie, I have to do another appointment tonight, so you sit tight, okay? All right, you sit tight for now. All right, well, I appreciate all of that, the comments, as well as the interest from Member Hollins and from Member Karen. Thank you very much. And Member Hollins, I will appoint you, and I will send you the information that we have about when the meetings are. We missed one, I believe, in September, so I think December would be the next one, but I'll make sure you get the information you need. Thank you. We'll move on to Item B, which is a school committee rep for bargaining with the food services and custodian unions. And Member Karen, it is, it is my plan to appoint you. You are actually a member of the negotiating and personnel committee, and if you are able and willing, I would like to make this appointment for you. Chair? Who is that talking?
That was the superintendent. I can unmute, or we can let Joe temporarily, Chair.
He's letting me know he's going to watch TV, so I think we're good.
I just wanted to note that this could be the same person, or it could be two different people. There's a good reason for it to be the same person in terms of negotiating, but if for any reason Chair wanted to make two different appointments, I just wanted to say that's entirely at your discretion.
Thank you. Can you help me with why it's helpful to have it be the same person?
Historically, with the union representative is sometimes the same for both contracts.
And it is, yeah. It is this time.
And so very often, things that are helpful in terms of bargaining, one, I'll give it a simple example that's okay in public session. If the city of Greenfield updated its benefits package, that would be addressed in one bargaining, but it would also be addressed in the other, and the person that had knowledge about it in one, that would be pertinent to the other, just as an example.
Sure.
If something that, you know, that may be relevant. It is time-consuming, so just to say, we essentially have every single bargaining unit active right now, and as Member Ekstrom said earlier, you know, this year in particular, there are so many changes to working conditions for all employees, so that would be one reason that you might consider. Two, I, I think there's an argument to be made for the same person, I just wanted to note that.
Thank you. I appreciate that perspective. I got a little nervous because I saw Member Karen left the meeting as soon as I said I was going to appoint her, but it appears she's back.
My sound just deleted itself, I couldn't hear anybody.
Okay, all right, you're back. Member Karen, if, if you have no serious objections, I will appoint you to be our, that's okay?
Yep.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. That takes care of two agenda items. We are cruising, although I probably shouldn't have said that out loud. Items referred from the budget subcommittee, Member Ekstrom, who is the chair of the budget subcommittee, will need to give me an overview here, because I can't even remember when, what we last talked about.
Right, so what we had, what had been carried over was a discussion about the number of students who are registered, I have to find my notes, number of students who are registered in the district, also by school, as well as taking a look at who was registered at the beginning of early learning, because when, what it appeared is that there were 120 students is what we had hired for, and we actually have 60 students who are enrolled, and so the question that came up in budget is that we are hiring and staffing properly and responsibly based on the number of students within that singular school, or, and, and within the rest of the district? Are we, are we being responsible and thoughtful about how we're using our funds? So that's sort of the short version. I believe we had some materials prepared for us, so we can look at the, I don't want to say attendance, registration at each school. So perhaps Superintendent, you could take it away? Unless you're busy, and then I'll see what I can do.
I am, oh, she is here, but she's on mute. Oh, there she goes.
I'm here, but take it away. Go for it.
No, that's fine. Let me, let me pull up my paperwork. I, of course, have misplaced it, and we're all dealing with everything. I, of course, have misplaced it, and we're all dealing with everything. Uh, let's see. I'm sorry, friends.
It's in the, the general school committee materials packet, correct? And did you want to look specifically at AEL right now?
Well, that, that was sort of my focus. So if we want to start a conversation with that, what I, what I did note is that compared to last year, the number of students that we had in all of the other schools was comparable. And so none of, we, we aren't necessarily overstaffing with bodies at any of the other schools, regardless of whether we're in person or not, which I was, I was hurting to see. So if we would like to start with discussing that, that would be great.
So the, the AEL topic, because there's a few things under these items referred from the budget subcommittee that we didn't spell out on the agenda.
Yes.
AEL staffing, and, well, let's put it this way. The student population at AEL is down compared to where it has been in previous years. Did you say it's down by about half?
Yes.
And so the question then becomes, in terms of a sound budgetary policy, do, do we have AEL staffed appropriately?
Yes.
And I would look to someone besides a school committee member to talk about that, whether that's the superintendent, or that's the business manager. I'm not sure how we approach the conversation, but it does probably warrant some discussion.
You know, and there are also a number of sort of nuances to that, in that we have, the Academy of Early Learning has a fair number of students who don't pay any tuition, but are receiving a lot of services because that's, that's mandated, for lack of a better term, or, that is the actual term, that we provide services for. And so it isn't just how many bodies and how many teachers and how many IAs we have, it's are we adequately staffed, given the needs of our population and the number of students who are there?
Correct. Thank you. Any comment or questions from school committee members or the superintendent on this topic?
Another nuanced comment?
Member Hollins, please.
There's seven classrooms in the building. I believe we were staffed for six or seven classrooms plus the classroom. We should clarify how many classrooms we need, but in addition to the nuance that Member Exstrom mentioned, that there's some students we're required to provide services for, and other students we elect to provide services for on a scale tuition. That isn't all the, that is not all there is to outreach to young children in our community, and it might be an opportunity to look at how other districts, in addition, serve the early childhood population three to five, you know, through outreach. That's all. It's another nuance that there are more ways than one to serve children in this three to five age group. Make sure no children are missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chair, could I comment?
Oh, please. Thank you.
So I just wanted to, you know, provide a little context for people listening. Most staffing decisions are made, first of all, according to the budget approved by the school committee, and that was voted, as we know, previous to most of the information that we have now, including the state's budget that was re-released today, some of the enrollment information, the trajectory of COVID, which of course, nobody knows. And it was August when the school committee voted its remote plus plan. So at the, that point, we had already needed to make, due to contractual timelines, commitments to most staff to return for the school year, not yet knowing which way the school committee would vote and so forth. Of course, it is accurate that the Academy of Early Learning has lower enrollment this year than previous years, by about 60 students. But it's also accurate that should the committee wish to implement some of the in-person services that are in our remote plus plan, whether now or in a subsequent phase, that the Academy of Early Learning might be a really ideal place to implement social distancing and return students to an in-person model, particularly for families with young children. Childcare is a real problem in the sense that high-quality, early education experiences are essential, and it can be very difficult for caregivers to find. Greenfield has historically offered both affordable and very high-quality early childhood care at the Academy of Early Learning. The low ratio that we have right now compared to typical is about what we would need in order to implement those social distancing guidelines. So while it is a decrease, it is very close to the ratio we would need, for one thing. And second is that it's really important for the listening audience to understand, this is, has nothing to do with a Greenfield particular situation. What we're seeing across the Commonwealth are preschool and kindergarten enrollment drops that are unprecedented. A lot of families really trying to grapple with COVID, many more of them working from home statewide, trying to understand, well, how best does our family juggle this situation? And some changes in employment situations for families as well. So we are pleased to have offered tuition discounts at the preschool that I think have been successful in keeping some of our students able to participate, and to have a really high-quality remote program at the preschool that has been doing really good things. And I would encourage the committee to keep an eye towards the staffing that we have to be able to pilot in-person services for our youngest learners. We know that in-person learning is, of course, where we all want to be. We have a beautiful playground, we have outdoor ability, we have tents up at that school, and we have terrific staff over there. So just as a, it's difficult because we have to staff for not just what is today, but what might be. And so I think we're staffed in a way that gives us that flexibility, and we want to, you know, continue to move as quickly as the committee is able to do so.
So there's a lot of nuance in this particular topic. And thank you, Superintendent.
For sure.
For getting that background. There was, you're, you're very good at that. I'm more focused on what's in front of me, as we all know. So, in any case. I think it's important that we had the overview from Superintendent Harper. I think it's critical that we brought this up in a public session so that we're all aware that these are things we need to look at. The, it's no secret that the district has a very, very tight budget that does not meet all of our needs currently. And it's also important that we, if we have flexibility built in, which it sounds like that's exactly what this offers us right now in an uncertain time, to be very cliche about it, that sounds like maybe a motion to do nothing would be appropriate with this one, but we'll just leave it at that, unless there's more comment from school committee members. Member Hollins? Member Hollins, you're not on my screen. Are you raising your hand?
Yep. I was, but I also saw the mayor raised her hand before me.
Oh, guys, come on. How many meetings have I said you're raising your hand?
What I'd like, what I'd like to say is, I, I actually think it is a budget, it would be important for us to understand how, that we have so many shortages now. To understand, and the school has, does have classrooms for social distancing, as the superintendent said, I'd like to know, you know, exactly what is our staffing now for the 60 children? And how many teachers and personnel do we have? And what I've been reading, but this has nothing to do with Greenfield, is that teachers all over, some are electing to retire early or leave for other reasons. And do we have, I would just like to know more about our budget at the school and what the plans are. Thank you.
Superintendent Harper, do you want to respond to that now, or should I move on to Mayor Wiedegartner? Do we need, is it something we want to prepare differently for the next meeting? How would you want to approach that?
Sure, I mean, in your packet, you have an updated version of the budget with all the teaching staff and so forth, so, you know, we're happy to provide any information you'd like about teaching staff. If, if there's a particular interest in talking more about the preschool program, and in particular, you know, this is a mandatory subject of collective bargaining in terms of returning to in-person versus remote, so I should just say that. But if there's an interest in talking in particular about preschool and what that might look like, it would be a really interesting topic, I think, for the public. And it would be good to have the Academy of Early Learning principal, or director of pupil services. You could hear about transportation, if you're interested in those different aspects of it, we could certainly add it. The model, as, as Member Holland said, the model varies from place to place. There's what you're required to do by law, there's what individual communities decide to do. Greenfield has elected a model that's been very successful, which sort of exceeds our legal requirement and provides high-quality early education for our youngest learners that become some of our very successful students when they enter in kindergarten. So that sort of bridge is, is, has benefits to the district, and obviously to the students and the families. So that's the model that we've been using, and if there's, there's often a sort of discussion about cost-benefit analysis, so that, I would say, if you wanted to have a more in-depth conversation, we should invite some of those folks and hear a little bit from each of them.
Thank you. And it does seem like it's appropriate more for a full school committee than a, than a budget subcommittee, but I would go either way on that. And then I know, Mayor Wiedegartner, you had a, a comment. Please go ahead.
Sure. I, really, I just, well, first wanted to support what Jordana said about the importance of the early learning program in Greenfield. It's been around for quite a while, and I do think it is a very successful model. So I support her interest in continuing it, whether or not it's got 60 or 120 students in it. And particularly, I'm intrigued by the thought to make this a pilot for in-person learning if we have the time, the budget, and the facilities to do this, because I do think that's a critical age for in-person learning. I'm not alone in that thought. I do think it's helpful to our community, and this is probably part of another discussion that we have on our agenda under new business. But just wanted to say I support the superintendent's thoughts and thinking on that. And then I'll support what Susan said, too. It's important to know exactly, in, in helping us make that decision, in-person learning as well as how to budget for it, it's important for us to have more detail, I think, on how it's staffed, and what all we need to know in order to make that decision from a financial perspective.
Thank you, Mayor. So we can probably move on from this one and perhaps add it as an agenda item for the next meeting, which will be in a short two weeks. Other budget subcommittee items that we want to address tonight, Member Exstrom. You're on mute.
Yep. Can you hear me?
No, yes, yes.
Okay. So also, what we were, wanted to discuss was a hiring grid and a list review, that being the committee and budget committee, budget committee and had carried over to the school committee, a discussion about those positions which were not filled with a reduction, after the reduction in force was sort of rehired, and those positions that were open that had never had a person working in them. So I, unless I've missed something, I don't see any, I don't see any of that within our packet, but I'm willing to say I may have missed it.
No, I didn't see anything in the packet either. It also is something that, I mean, we can just note that we want to discuss at the next meeting, in the interest of time.
That's fine.
Given the new budget information today from the governor, that-
What, you're not ready?
That may be useful. Because what we had in the summer was an administrative update, and those numbers have been what we've been going off of. But they, and they're very similar to, to what we're seeing today, we think, but there are some changes in the low income, how it's calculated. And so that, and of course, this still needs to be approved by the legislature. So this is the oddest budget cycle I think anybody's ever seen. So for what that's worth.
Well, and, and slightly off-topic, I know from my full-time job that GCC, where I work, was notified, surprise, we have some money for you to do this. And it was completely out of the blue, and it sounds like also the mayor's office received a similar notice from the state this, this week. Surprise, you've never heard of us, you've never heard of our office, but we have all this money to give you. And so there's clearly some things happening, whether that is state, it sounds like it's probably federally allocated block grant money to the state that has gone unused, that they're trying to figure out how now they use it. It's COVID-related. But I was, I was very interested to see the mayor's email, and then sitting down at work, like, two days later, saw a very similarly worded email from a different person, but related to funds they were giving to the college. So, yeah, odd budget cycle, and lots of things kind of still unfolding that, you know, and, you know, to kind of help folks who are listening in, who are trying to understand how we do budgeting as well. You know, people have said over and over again, we get questions, have we applied for grants? Or I see on social media, well, is the school district applying for grants? Is the city applying for grants? Yes, of course we are. Whenever there is a grant that we think we would be successful with, that we meet the criteria for, we're going to apply, whether that's city, school district. But what, what folks need to understand about grant funds, and the, these surprise funds that we've heard of this week hold true to that, is it's not a blank check. It's not money you put into your general fund. It's a very granular way to be used, and I believe the money that is, the, the money that the city is potentially getting is an even, it's a very slim project. And so I, I don't think we need to talk about it anymore, but the point about the budget cycle, the point about the funding, and folks always asking us if we're getting grant funds, yeah, it's a very, very strange time to try to figure out how all of this is going to unfold, and how we can use it to best help our students is, of course, the number one thing. Okay, I've said enough. Let's see. I think we're ready to move on. Am I right to FY21 budget recommendations, item D there? Am I in the right spot? I've lost my spot entirely on the agenda. Let's go with that.
Yes, I think you're in the right spot.
Someone just shut me up and told me to move on. Okay, so overview, maybe by Andy? I don't know who wants to give an overview of the budget recommendations piece.
If I.
And then we'll chat. Hi, Andy.
Hello there. So what this was is, as we've mentioned, the, the drawing the line in the sand to adjust the budget with what we know for personnel as of the most recent time. So this reflects that. So what it is, and as I mentioned, I know there's, like, the format looks different, but the only reason why it was, because I was, you know, going through and at the direction of the budget finance subcommittee was to, you know, not necessarily, I'm going to say concern with format, but just get the information out there that this is what it is that we would be looking to, for the full committee to vote as a, I'm going to call it like a level reset of the FY21 budget. Now, this does dovetail with some of the discussions that was just going on regarding that personnel grid, in the sense that there are still changes that are coming from a, a lot of the instructional aids area. So, you know, Dr. Dickinson and I have been having regular discussions regarding those things, but this, I would say, is what I would like to do and recommend to the committee to vote this as a revised FY21 budget with the personnel changes that have occurred to date. And then as they occur, as we continue going on, you will see those changes that are, would occur after this, through the salary encumbrance area, and then ultimately budget transfers that we would bring forward in accordance with your policy.
Awesome. Thanks, Andy. So the budget that we have in our materials for this evening that is laid out very neatly, this is the one we're talking about, and it sounds like we're looking for a motion to approve this as our current fiscal year 21 budget. Would you say that's accurate, Andy?
That is correct.
Okay. So can I get a motion from a school committee member?
So moved.
And a second. That was Mayor Wiedegartner, and a second. Anyone?
Second.
That was Member Wall. All right. And let's have some discussion. So hopefully folks have had a chance to look at this. It is, the biggest changes, as Andy said, are personnel changes. When I looked through it, although I'm not a budget person, I didn't see anything that was hugely different from the ones, the versions we've seen previously. Questions or further discussion?
Reminder to members, if you have questions or comments, speak up. Don't raise your hand.
You have a couple of comments.
Member Hollins, please, go ahead.
I have three comments, actually. I noticed, I wish that we would accept this and then vote it next time, so we could have time to look at it, and we could have hard copies. Visually, it's really hard for me to see this on the computer screen. But my comment is, one of the changes I noted is in out-of-district special ed placements, which is probably, I think, the most important line item in the whole budget, because it can go up and down by several hundred thousand dollars without notice, and there's nothing we can do about it often. But I noticed that we have changed the budget from something like 1.2 million to 893,000. And I'm wondering how you trans, where you put the other 341, $8492,000. That's one question. And this, do you want me to go all the comments at once, or one at a time?
Go ahead and give them all now, please.
The second one has to do with high school instructional elective program. I've been an advocate of keeping this in its own cost center, where it was approved by City Council in 2008, which I know is outdated. But that allowed the high school principal with staff to make decisions about what the elective program was. But there's no change there. And with regard to so many people asking for more money for racial justice programs, I'm wondering if those lines could be increased in this budget. I don't know what happened to the SRO. But those lines are line 85 and line, 103. One is the instructional electives at the high school. I think that's personnel. And the other is the instructional elective supplies, which I believe is supplies and maybe contracted services. And if that were increased, then the high school principal could bring on more elective programs, which is what we're talking about with racial equity programs. That's the second. And the third, we have been buying a lot of technology. I have a complaint with that. But if you look at the technology budget, I raised this before, our equipment budget in this budget is $14,000. I don't know how many hundreds we've spent. But I think we need to be more realistic about what we're spending in technology, or at least to know where is the money coming from, because we certainly have spent more than $14,000. And my particular interest is in understanding the instructional and non-instructional software licenses, which this budget has $198,000, which seems high to me, but I don't know anymore what we buy. We have a lot of non-instructional software licenses just for reporting to the state and reporting health, or reporting this, that, and the other thing. And I think it would be really helpful, we could get just an understanding of what's in the, those two lines include, and where are we buying all our technology from. It's not out of the $14,000 line. So that was three items that interest me in particular, besides preschool and supplies for our students. Thank you.
Chair? Chair, I just wanted to--
Harper, go ahead.
A couple of quick responses to that. I don't have in front of me a list of all the subscriptions, but I can tell you that they increased significantly this year. And the vast majority of that funding, somebody is pounding furiously on their keyboard, the vast majority of that funding--
I'm going to guess it's Andy.
Andy's a very fast typist. The vast majority of that funding is grant-funded, so COVID-specific expenses. So when we had to buy additional remote learning software that would support a district-wide platform that was more robust, for example, that is new technology, new software, and new expenses that was due to moving into remote, and that was COVID-related expense. So we do have access to federal funding earmarked for expenses in whatever method your district is operating. And so that, that cost center has gone up significantly. However, there is a very high proportion of it is funded through this sort of one-time money, federal money, CARES Act money, and grants. I don't at all disagree, and if our tech director were speaking now, she would say, you know, hallelujah, please, absolutely increase the line for subscriptions, because in just a regular year, this goes up every year, because schools are becoming more and more digitally fluent, students need access to evolving technologies, our textbooks move online, so on and so forth. That's just the way things are going. So it's sort of shifted in that there is a need, as you put it, for more realistic budgeting in this line. And just to note that we have always had this discussion around capital, which is coming up soon, so this is very timely. We're woefully underfunded in technology in general, in our budget. And it is not wise to rely on a patchwork of grants for something that is central to the service you provide to students. So I really do fully agree with that. I also want to note that there's a special ed and people services component. So when you think about, when you think about access, like, if you have a physical building and children need to get into the building, then you think about Americans with Disability Act accommodations, like ADA, like, you have to make the door wide enough for a wheelchair, things like that. But in remote learning, we're also responsible for making access to students, even in that. So there are a number of subscriptions that, over the summer, the Director of People Services, myself, our tech director, teachers worked to build additional tech-based supports for students that need a particular software, because the screen glare, you know, is bad for their ocular condition, just as an example, that kind of thing. So I would say you're spot-on to notice the need and increase. We can certainly bring together a list. Much of it is interesting and exciting. A lot of it came from our teachers, and we are fortunate to have the funding mostly federal. I did want to ask a question. I was, I guess I'm looking for clarification. You noted about the SRO funding and a desire to earmark the elective line, but I don't really see the connection between the social justice, racial equity work, and an elective line. I think, I know at least from the folks that have contacted the district that I've heard, the public interest is in sort of broad curriculum components, professional development, a lot of which is ongoing, but some additional support, as well as counselors and staffing that are specifically helping to support and work with students of color, students with a background in trauma, so on and so forth. So, and community programs, like stand-up, we've heard that a number of times, that can directly work with our students. So I don't know that there's so much elective programs as broad district-wide supports. And I'm maybe trying to clarify that, and you're welcome to do it now or another time.
Member Hollins, did you want to respond to that?
Yes. The two lines I mentioned, that, you know, it doesn't have to be there, but what I understood was initially, the interest was really bringing programs into the high school, but also looking through a district-wide lens. And the elective or extracurricular lines allow for consultants, additional staff. I was very interested, someone referred me to Portland, Oregon, reading, listening to their consultant, and, you know, the professional development, the materials, the programs they offer, this programs for students, I think some of that would come in under electives. And that's why I thought moving that money over, because it's not the core program, it's woven in as new and different student faculty. I thought it went there. But in some way or another, I like to see that money, some money go to the high school to allow the staff, the superintendent, the principal. I thought some of it was purchasing services or purchasing program support or resources for the library, or speakers, or trips, or something, whatever. It would just give more flexibility to what they're doing there for additional programs, because otherwise that money is kind of fixed. And that's why I thought we should act on that in this year's budget, since there's great keen interest, and it's important. Hope that helped. I don't care where it goes, but I think we should get some money there.
Thank you, Mayor Hollins.
Chair, regarding the tuitions, Member Hollins, due to the closure mid-year, we have carryover funds in the special ed 240 grant from the prior fiscal year. So we're able to use those to offset the tuition, so that we're able to reduce from the local appropriation.
That's great. Thank you.
Other questions or comments on this issue, the budget? I did like, Member Hollins, I did appreciate, and I think we should do a vote and a revote, a second vote to affirm at our next meeting regarding the changes, but to push through with the motion that's already on the table now. And then after folks have had a chance to review and ask any question, more detailed questions from the superintendent or from the business manager, we could, at our next meeting, actually do an official, a final vote. I like that idea a lot. Thank you for bringing that up. Further questions or comments from the school committee members?
Can I ask something?
Sure. Who is that?
It's Ekstrom.
I can't tell. But yes, go ahead.
So here's my question. Given what the superintendents told us about the budget from the governor finally having some movement, I wonder if, and I'm going to shoot myself in the foot with this, I wonder if the budget subcommittee should meet, and so we can do a more pause, hands-on poke-and-prod of funding, so that it doesn't, that level of work doesn't have to be done at the full committee level, but also to ask questions and get some feedback on more smaller minutia pieces that wouldn't typically interest everybody and their brother. I'm asking--
If we meet next week--
Hold on, Jordana was going to say something.
Oh, please, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, I support that. I think the Budget and Finance Subcommittee should feel very clear on the new recommendations, the new chapter 70 coming out of the governor's budget, just given the timing of it, and have a chance to look at that. Member Hollins raised some questions tonight. I think the previous comments about how the SRO funding will be applied in this budget, I think the Budget and Finance Subcommittee should feel crystal clear on all of that with the new information from the state budget as well.
Yeah.
Comment?
Member Hollins, go ahead.
I very much support Member Ekstrom's thought. And could we please have hard copies? Those of us who would like to have a copy that's more readable than a screen copy, and you leave it outside and pick it up. I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, we can get hard copies mailed out to all the members that need them. If you need, if you prefer or want a hard copy of this revised budget, can you please send me an email so that we can get those?
So Jean's going to want one as well.
Thank you.
And I'm not going to lie, I'll want one, because I want to make notes on it, and I don't have the appropriate kind of paper to print it on.
Okay. Anyone else who is not on that list, just email me, and we'll make sure that we get those out to you. Other questions or comments? Okay, so what I would like to do is, we'll move to a vote on this now. I'll have Susan Farber read us the motion. And then, as we just discussed, we will bring it up for a vote at our next school committee meeting as well. Susan Farber, can you just read us what we're voting on?
Are you on mute, Susan?
She's not on mute.
Try again.
There!
All right. The motion is to approve the revised budget as presented as the current FY21 budget.
Okay. Let's move to a vote. Member Johnson Musad, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, members, please unmute yourselves. Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Wiedegartner?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Wonderful. Thank you all for that. And again, we will do a deep dive at the budget subcommittee meeting that we'll schedule likely for next week. And then we will bring it up again and have another discussion at the next school committee meeting. All right, so we're going to move into new business. And in the interest of being respectful of time for two of our guests that are going to be speaking tonight, I am interested in getting a motion to actually have the report from transportation, which is currently item B, and then the report from athletics, which is currently item D, actually become item A and item B respectfully, so we can get those done. Could I have a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
That was Mayor Wiedegartner, and a second, I think, from Member Ekstrom. And any discussion of that? Okay, so let's just move to a vote, make sure we're okay with that. Member Johnson Musad. Glenn, you're on mute.
I am.
I was like, Member Karen, you might be muted.
I won't say anything.
All right. Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
I'm sorry, I don't know what we're voting.
They're voting to change the order of some items in the agenda.
Yeah, change the items. Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Wiedegartner?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you all for doing that. Thank you. And so, please, Ed, we would love to hear from you about transportation. You can go ahead. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to explain by what I sent in, a line item by line item. And there's a certain point I want to talk to the mayor regarding the DPW and what they were able to do for us. And we've already thanked him once, but I want to make sure that's clear. To begin with, on our timetable of March to June, and I have Jake Walt Smith with me now also, we delivered, assisted in delivering Chromebooks. We assisted in delivering lunches with the cafeteria, who my heart goes out to them. They're working very hard for the community, and we've enjoyed working with them. We trained with PMO for new COVID regulations, and those are the CDL drivers in the original group that was called in in June of our staff. And in July and August, we started delivering students to Springdale Center School for the summer school programs. At the same time, we deep cleaned every piece of equipment we have available to us, all the buses and vans. And the deep cleaning means they were cleaned thoroughly and disinfected and-- The other thing we did is we stocked all the vehicles with cleaning supplies and PPE every day. The school deliver PPE gear and pickup packages and, from the post office to have delivered, we received at this point in July and August-- We received at this point in July and August, seven new vans, which were desperately needed at, by this point. We managed to get them registered and outfitted and assigned. Now, this is where I want to speak to the mayor and thank her very much, and especially thank Paul Newell and his crew, because those seven new vans were outfitted a day at a time, which is almost unheard of. Everything works. And we spoke to them on that already, but I wanted to reiterate it in front of the mayor. They did an excellent job for us and we all thank them. Now, August to
I just said thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. On August to October, we completed another training with PM Owen, who has been also a thankful soul for our crew, because she's been excellent in our training and works with us every day on the COVID issues when we pick up children. We completed that training with PM and we've had a final structure for the whole year of what we need to do every day. At the end of August, the out-of-district students are returned to a full school year. Employees were called back as they were needed. Now, we delivered children to Springdale Education Center, the Center School, Hack Academy, Cutchins, the Tech School, Neri and Valley West. And just a reminder to the school committee that we're, we can only put two children to a van. So it's been very stressful getting everybody delivered. We have 13 vans and a lot more children than we have vans. And at this point, I'd like to have Jake say a few comments, what it's like to the school committee at this time, getting schedules even just with special ed completed. Jake, go ahead.
Yeah, so we, in order to get all of this done, it's, it's very complicated, because a lot of these schools don't go every single day. We have, we have schools that, you know, they have students that go three days out of the week. Some of them that are, they take a day off in order to do deep cleaning at their respective schools. And just moving them all with the equipment that we have with only two students to a van, and really, it can only be one student to a van if a child requires a monitor. That's been a huge challenge for us. And we're, we're using all of our equipment every single day in order to move these, just, you know, 24 students. And obviously, if we move to doing more in-district transportation, where we, we won't have the ability to move all of the students with the equipment that we currently have and with the restrictions that are, that are placed on us with the COVID regulations.
I hope that was clear from Jake. We have a good team that works on this every day in the schedule, and I thank them. What we have going forward is we are delivering lunches three times a week with the lunch program for the entire district, which has been a tough job for the people that you employ in the food service industries, but it's been excellent working. And I want to put my compliments out to Star, who keeps everything organized, including a schedule to Jake, so that we can keep assisting them on a daily basis. We call our incoming vans from out of district Uber deliveries, because they go to Star or wherever else we need them before they go out on their next run. We also completed athletics discussions with Mike. Jake's got a schedule and we have drivers available to them to continue completing their athletic schedule for the year. Mike's an excellent guy to work with and Jake and our crew have been working well to get them together and get them to their different sports events. We want to continue that. The buses, all our buses were inspected. Once we shut down at the end of March, we lost a lot of training time. We lost licenses to drivers and CDL drivers and Class B drivers. We rejuvenated that through the registry, which was closed, which was, trust me, a, a, a real challenge. Paul Newell could tell you that he went from Pittsfield to Springfield to Chickaby just to get registration plates all in one day, and it was still not successful. That's how hard it's been to keep things running. But we do have them running, and I want to thank all the people that I mentioned. PM, Paul, and Jake, and our entire transportation crew and Star. We want to continue working and keeping the district moving every day. The last part of what I want to tell the school committee today is that changes are also being made in the registry. We have one 7D bus, which is the white one, which used to be an FRTA bus. It has been well-kept, well-maintained. We can no longer use it as a 7D bus. It has to be decommissioned by November 30th. And the reason being is it's over 10,000 pounds, which needs to be painted yellow, and you have to have a CDL driver. Therefore, it's got to be discontinued. But my recommendation to the school committee at this time is that we put a blue plate on that bus and we use it both for athletics and our division of transportation after most of the school days over. And also let Star use it for her general transportation of food services to the community. It would be an excellent use for that bus rather than just put it out to auction. The other thing, the thing of it is with the 7D discontinuation of that bus, it's over 10,000 pounds. And we have to have anything 9,500 or under with a yellow plate on it from here on out. And to replace that FRTA bus right now, we would need two 10-passenger vans rated at under 9,500 pounds. And that would assist in completing our fleet and keeping it the way it is now. In regard to that, because they're 7D, we would most likely have to replace or bring in two more drivers. But that would be able to keep us going the way we are now throughout the year. And if I'm open for questions, and so is Jake, if you have any on what we presented here.
Thank you both so much. What is Jake's last name? We need that for the record.
His name is William Waldsmith Jr., AKA, the third, AKA Jake.
William Waldsmith.
And is that his head over there on the far right side, just the top of it that we're seeing? Oh, yeah, oh, there you are. Okay.
We just need that for the record. Thank you for that update, guys. Any questions from school committee members?
I have a question.
Member Hollins, go ahead.
A question and comment. Could you give us the approximate cost of the type of bus vehicle you're saying we're need? And my comment is, we just can't keep adding buses to our already limited instructional budget for children. We've got to really persuade capital borrowing for vehicles. It just, we, we just have to make sure we're educating children with our money and it's all. I don't need the actual cost, just is it 40,000, 50,000, 80,000, 100,000? What are you talking about? Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hollins. It looks like Ed may have frozen up. Ed, if you, if you're there, can you try to respond?
I
What was that? I'm sorry, you're breaking up. No, you're breaking up quite a bit. Try again.
Can you hear us? We're trying to reload.
Nothing.
Yes. Yep, I can hear you.
Can you hear us?
Yep.
Okay. Susan, I heard your question. I do not know the answer to that yet. That was something I'm going to work with Paul Newell and the procurement system that the city has to look at either used or new. I would suspect we'd be spending at least 30,000 apiece for those vehicles. However, I have to make a point regarding what we do. In a lot of cases, those vehicles, you can't educate the kids if we can't get them there. And I know that's not a problem right now because we're remote. But when we come out of remote, I, I feel like there's going to be a lot of pressure on us to produce the kids at school. I want to be ready, and I'm just putting this out ahead of time. We're fine the way we are right now until November 30th, when that white bus has to be decommissioned. It's something we continue, we can continue to discuss, and I'll ask Paul Newell to take a look.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the school committee members? All right, hearing done. We will thank you very much for your time tonight, gentlemen. We appreciate it. And we'll actually move into our update from Coach Kuchuski and athletics.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Jake.
Hi, everyone. Good evening.
Bye-bye. Go ahead.
Just trying to get a bite to eat. Thank you for moving me forward. I appreciate everything that's going on. I'm here tonight just to give you a little update with athletics. Our, our teams are doing very well in the competition part of it. Field hockey won again tonight. I know Superintendent Harper mentioned they've had a good start. They've won again today. Our golf team won again today. So we're competing very well. Our cross-country team won today. We're competing very well in our little bubble here. We have some numbers in soccer that we haven't seen in a while. Coach Rupp in boys soccer has started a junior program to try to get some younger kids involved on Sundays at the high school. Coach Riddell has got the girls out there twice a week. And myself with football, we've got a few schools now for the co-op that we've got over 30 kids that have been coming out. Knock on wood, we haven't had any health issues. Things are going pretty well. And, you know, we're getting kids, trying to get some kids back to normalcy. So the reason why I'm here tonight is with Governor Baker changing the, the laws of, I guess I shouldn't say laws, but the, the numbers allowed at outdoor venues. We've been getting some feedback from, from certain individuals, parents, that want to see their kids play in, in, of course, in, in the activity that there, there might be participating in. And so we, we had an athletic directors meeting last week and we discussed it. And most of us didn't have any school committee meetings until this week or next. And the season's going to be over at the end of October. And so basically, what I'm going to be asking for is if, if the committee would consider amending the zero fan rule and consider two fans per student athlete, home only. Fans only, two student, two per student athlete at home games. It would be, basically, they would come in. I have two COVID coaches for field hockey. Their COVID coaches would have the student's name on a piece of paper. And the two that would be representing the student athlete would write their names down for, for contact tracing purposes. They would be allowed inside the field, the social distancing purposes, of course, all the way through. And it wouldn't put us over the number of 50, because right now, we're, we're carrying about 20 on field hockey, 14 on cross-country. And cross-country is a little different, because you run in a park in Highland. It's public. It's, it would be more of a, at the finish line type of keeping the people distancing. We've had a 60-foot finish line, start and finish line at Highland Park. So there is a lot of social distance going on. The away team is dropped off at the tennis courts up on Highland Ave and will walk down, so that's not a problem. Golf, golf is a country club. That's a very large area, very hard to police. They've been doing a pretty good job. As Greenfield Country Club has been social distancing over the past six months since COVID has started of keeping everybody safe up there. So I'm basically just asking if we could move on to allowing two home fans per home student athlete at home games. And right now, we have two. And just to add on to that, I have talked to GCTV. Philippe got back to me today. They plan on doing a live broadcast of a field hockey game on October 23rd. I think that's the day he had. I don't have it in front of me, but I think that's against Pioneer. It's a Friday, October 23rd. Just give you update. So that's why I'm here. And I'm also here to, you know, if anybody has any questions or comments, if anybody wants to say anything, feel free, because I'm here for you.
Okay, so stick with us, Coach. And what we'll do is we'll make a motion and move to discussion, and hopefully you can answer questions for us. So can I get a motion to, hang on. A motion to allow two spectators per home athlete at our home games? Does that work, Coach? Does that sound good?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to that effect, anyone?
So moved.
From the mayor, and a second.
Again.
That was, I think, Katie Karen. And discussion, questions, comments?
Mayor would like to speak?
Go ahead. Mayor Rita Gardner, please.
I support, I support Mike's request. I think it's very, it's important for families to be out, out there and supporting their children and our students. I think this motion, I think I heard Mike say, so he can answer this. I think I heard him say, they wouldn't be random people. They would be people who are part of that student's family or very close friends. So I don't know if you have a criteria for that. But two per family or two per player doesn't seem like a, an unreasonable request to me. And I, I think we can handle that right now.
Well, and they do have someone doing contact tracing.
Yes, and I think that's very important, and I support that as well. Of course, my health director would be upset with me if I didn't.
Mayor, just to answer your question, you know, it's not going to be random, you know, people. I think that the point being, two parents would be, or grandparents.
Yeah.
One mom, grandparent. I think it's going to be more like that. I mean, my daughter's not going to be asking her next-door neighbors down the road to come and take me one of the two. You know what I mean? So I don't think that's going to be happening. I think it's more in tune to get the parents involved. And especially our senior parents who, who've only got about four games left to be able to see their kids play their senior year, so.
I, I agree, and I support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
Question?
Member Hollins, go ahead.
Could somebody identify where this guideline is that we are voting to change? Because I'm not aware that this is a school committee guideline unless it's embedded in.
We voted, we voted on this previously when Mike came to talk to us at a previous school committee meeting. What we voted on was to allow us to do the Fall One category sports.
Oh, I see. I see. So this has to do with the COVID.
Yeah. And it, it was explained to us that Franklin County had put together its own conference for this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember that just not.
We, yeah, we voted on the Fall One sports, and it was at that time
That we did that?
No spectators. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question. Any other questions, comments?
Chair, could I add a comment?
Please.
I want to support Coach Kay's request here. We've had some conversation with the Board of Health, and I actually think that this could be more safe than our current practice. I think what we heard from everybody and what makes sense is that everyone wants to support their athletes and their family. And so we end up with people that are sort of just outside the area. And it's very difficult to enforce. The coaches are focused on the game and the players. So we really want to have it be small and manageable and focus on the athletes. And I think this really accomplishes that and gives the players the support they need while keeping it safe. So I think it's thoughtful, and I would endorse it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Awesome. Let's move to a vote. Member Johnson Musad, would you do a vote for us, please?
Absolutely. Member Karen?
Yes.
Nice chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, I may yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergardner?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Wonderful. I wonder if I hear a cheer going up across Greenfield, we might.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate everybody, all, all you've done through all these times, and, um, you know, past six months have been some bad words and some bad verbiage, and I appreciate all the things that you have done to try to make it the best for our student athletes. And hopefully, we'll see you at one of the last two games, come out and support our kids.
Yeah, how do you get a ticket, Coach?
Well.
And Mike, can, can that get you a ticket? Like, come on.
Now, wait a minute, which one of the two people am I?
You could, you could stand over on Silver Street, and I'll give you some binoculars.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Well, and, and Mike, thank you.
Come by or anything?
Yeah. You've made our job very easy by outlining exactly what you all have planned and agreed to, and so we appreciate all the extra effort you put into being patient with us and coming to see us. And I look forward to hearing the, the thank yous from all the parents of the student athletes who've been contacting us as well. So good luck to everyone at the end of the season.
And I'll probably be back first week in November talking about winter sports. That's just came on my table today, so.
Awesome. Please do.
Oh, good!
Have a good night.
All right, thank you very much. Take care.
You too. All right, so we are, thank you all for that. Moving forward, the Remote Plus update discussion would be the next thing on our agenda. And let me just get out my notes here. Georgiana, do you want to give us an update or overview, or maybe Susan Ekstrom? I'm not sure. Probably appropriate to start with the superintendent, but I'll like, let you guys fight it out.
Superintendent, Superintendent, feel, please feel free to go ahead. I get a lot of stuff to say.
Sure, I'm not exactly sure what you're looking for here, and there's a lot that could be said. The committee has, is aware that we've recently adopted several policies, protocols that have really been designed to support and enhance what we're doing in remote learning. We are in Phase One, which is the fully remote portion of our Remote Plus plan. Our Remote Plus plan has four phases, and part of the design of this plan was to phase in in-person services. My original proposal to this committee was we phase those in every two weeks. There was some thought that that was too soon. One of the most critical things that's happening in the district right now are upgrades to our HVAC systems in preparation for any use of the buildings in person. We, that work is going on in that the initial assessments are completed. George Vandalinder on the city side, DPW maintenance crew, Alan Schmidt on the school side, principals and custodians are, we've completed the assessments, and now we're into the repair phase. So an example would be that if an air exchange was too low in a particular space, that George or the custodians might have been going into the space and fixing a fan belt to literally mechanically move the air through the space better, or to repair something, or to install filters, or something like that. Our first round of assessments focused primarily on the rooms that would be used in the first phase of in-person services. This was done intentionally to speed up. Instead of assessing every room in every building and repairing every room in every building, we really tried to prioritize when those guidelines came out in late August and say, which rooms do we need right away and get those in the queue? You can imagine that every district in the Commonwealth went through a similar process at a similar time. So that's why we prioritize that way. And I'm really pleased that that initial work has been done, like I said, and now we're into the repair phase. That means that very soon, I'm expecting another report from George in the next couple of days. That means that very soon, those Phase One rooms will be ready. Obviously, negotiations are ongoing. This is something that is subject to collective bargaining, because whether we're working remotely or in-person obviously changes working conditions. But the committee's plan calls for phasing in in-person services. So that's just as it relates to the plan, and our sense that students would benefit from the ability to receive the in-person services that are in the plan that the committee voted as soon as possible. And we want to thank everyone who's been so patient, so flexible. Our teachers are working regularly, reporting double hours. I mean, they're literally bending over backwards to make this a successful experience, because we know it's not the same as the classroom. And families are working just as hard, and it's not ideal for some students. So we know that all of those things being the case, our initial results are helping us fine-tune it. There's a lot of positive results. Overall, we are experiencing very few technical issues. We've not had any major outages, except for the citywide power outages that had nothing to do with Greenfield at all, were related to the storm in Eversource. And in general, we are really heartened by the attendance, the participation, the support from families, and the hard work of our educators. We believe that the new attendance protocol will help students understand the importance of being visibly participating. And we do ask that students have their cameras on while they're participating in live synchronous instruction, or that they're participating in some other way that's been discussed with the teacher. An example is a student with a IEP or a 504 plan accommodation that has a challenge with the camera being on. Can it, of course, work on an accommodation that's appropriate for them? But we do want to ensure that we have the active engagement of our students throughout remote learning. It is a different way of learning, but by and large, it's being really successful so far. Our Wednesday half-day program looks a little different than the rest of the week. Students are not in live synchronous learning on Wednesday afternoons. We were really pleased to be able to streamline that time across the district, as we heard overwhelmingly from families. We were also pleased to stagger our start times from pre-K through high school throughout the district. So we think that the really thoughtful work of the Great Team over the summer, the very comprehensive plan that this committee approved, and the training around technology, the expert work we had through the collaborative, and our in-district tech teachers and in-district teacher experts have really helped make this a very strong start to remote learning. Our attendance is generally good, and, and we, we really think we're making the most of the situation. Having said that, I think it's really essential that we're moving next into the phases of the plan that are defined in the plan. We have a short window while outdoor weather is still very useful or conducive to learning. We've been doing testing, in-person testing, some in-person meetings, and I really hope to accelerate that. And it's a little tricky to talk more, because it borders on some of the negotiations that are ongoing. So I, I think I'll stop there unless there are specific questions. I, I hope that's what you're looking for.
That's, speaking for myself, that's exactly what we're looking for. That's a super helpful update. I know, as you probably recall, I've been a little bit obsessed with the HVAC consideration, so it's nice to hear that that's ongoing and thoughtfully planned out. I would be interested in hearing what other school committee members have in terms of comments or questions.
I have something.
And I've got a thought.
And Member Ekstrom. And whoever that was, was that Mayor Weidergardner?
That was the ma, that was the mayor.
Okay, so we got Johnson Musad.
I can go last, I don't mind.
And then the mayor. Yep, go ahead, Glenn, please.
Superintendent Harper, can you remind us the name? I'm forgetting the acronym of the team that did the planning for the, the different stages.
The Great Team?
The Great Team, and is the Great Team continuing to meet?
So the idea was that the Great Team would continue. In proximity, a lot of the Great Team are educators that are completely consumed with, focused on remote learning right now. So we have a little bit asked the school committee to be that interim bridge, because we are meeting on the same frequency that we had recommended the Great Team meet. And also, if there's a specific change or departure from the school committee Remote Plus plan, that would be a good way to sort of reinvigorate the Great Team. The other group that's meeting, as you know, Member Johnson Musad, more, more often than.
Anyone?
Anyone?
Often. No, I don't mean to laugh. The, the negotiations team is also meeting very, very often. So I think between those two groups, there hasn't been a formal meeting of the Great Team. What there is is an awful lot of informal collaboration amongst the teachers, a bit focused on the tech implementation and training. So we've created some sort of informal, sort of chatroom-style ways for teachers to continue to update one another and share resources and technology related to the implementation of the current phase that we're in. But I think it has been less focused so far, just within the district in terms of teachers on implementing the next phase. And the school committee, just want to remind you all, has a role in voting the next phase and sort of pulling that trigger. So we are focused on doing the best we can within the phase that we're at, which is Phase One. And the school committee is really the gatekeeper of moving from Phase One into more in-person services, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so if community members, I mean, I know some community members have different opinions about when we should launch into the next phase, or they might have questions and comments. Should they direct those to us? Or at one point, I think there was an email addressed for the Great Team. So I'm just wondering where community feedback should go on, on topics related to this.
The Great Team email is great@gpsk12.org, and you can certainly use it at any time. But as I indicated, they're really focused right now on implementing of Phase One, and a lot of them are teachers, and also we have school committee reps and so forth. I would strongly recommend members of the public that want to express their opinion about in-person versus remote learning, direct that directly to the school committee. So the committee is hearing very clearly. You're also always welcome to contact myself, but as the committee is in the decision-making role. And again, just to say publicly that the process is an extremely complex one, because it requires the negotiation. We don't just have one union, we have the teachers, the Unit C instructional assistants. We also have food service, transportation, custodial, everybody you heard about today, admin assistance, and the working conditions in each phase change for every employee as we move through this. So it's not to make excuses whatsoever. We understand that that's a very important issue to families and to our students, and obviously to our teachers. We take the health and safety of our students very seriously, and we take their education seriously. This is what we're here to do. But having said all of that, I recommend people reach out directly to the committee with any questions or concerns using that school comm, email address, schoolcomm@gpsk12. It's on our website. Folks seem to have access to that, and that goes fully to the full committee.
Thank you, Superintendent Harper. Thanks for your leadership on this.
Comment?
This is Katie. I also have a comment.
Chair Poiety, you're on mute if you're trying to run the trains.
Yep, thank you. We are going in order. We have Member Ekstrom next, then the mayor, and I did hear Katie Karen.
Susan.
And then Susan Hollins. So go ahead, Member Ekstrom, please.
So, uh, thank you, Superintendent. You did a great overview of everything that's been going on. I am the committee member who is consistently attending all the negotiations for every single piece of things that we're doing. And that is anywhere from, I don't know, eight to 10 hours a week typically. Yesterday, when I left our meeting, I was enraged. I was offended. And this is just me. I'm not suggesting that anyone, that I'm speaking for anyone but myself. And I am concerned that the negotiations are not being conducted in a equal manner and are not being conducted in good faith. That is my own opinion. Part of the reason that I was interested in, and, and let me step back. I spent the better part of my day spinning, because I was so angry and so frustrated. And then I just, you know, and I sent an email off to the, the other members of the committee's team, the negotiating committee's team, saying, this is what's happening for me. And the superintendent was wonderful, and there was a statement that she made that settled me back quite a bit. And, um, Superintendent, do you mind if I share your last sentence? Of the email you sent? You're fine to say no, and I won't.
I don't know which one you're referring to, so.
So the.
Let me say it this way, it's a public record, so you may.
Okay, so I'll say this. I was very, I was very angry, and really feel like negotiating in good faith is not what's happening on, on the side of the MTA. I will not say that about the GEA. I think our teachers are invested and working very hard and want to be teaching our students to the best of their abilities, very hard, and all of those things.
Oh, Member Ekstrom, if the email you're referring to was part of our strategy for bargaining, I might caution you against sharing.
All right, so let me just say, the superintendent's last sentence of her email to me made me think, you know what, you're right. And she settled me down. Based on what I've said earlier, I suspect you can all imagine what it may have said, and what I may have said. So I want to, I want to say that the Great Team did an amazing job. We are still in Phase One, and it was Phase One with also, like, 2A. Phase One services, fully remote instruction with certified teachers as the basis for all curriculum. Some in-person services begin outdoors immediately. Family and student meetings take place outdoors. That happened. It took a long time to get that to happen. High-needs learners begin or continue receiving in-person services outdoors, at home, or at school. We're still working on that. I'm talking about Phase One. B, two, never mind. So the live instruction piece is happening, remote learning and platform subscriptions is happening, CSO, Power School, attendance, feedback. We have done an amazing job pushing through all of those things. The reason that I voted for, or was interested in the Remote Plus is because I thought it would get our students, high, high-needs, at-risk students back in schools, getting the services that they needed as soon as possible. That isn't happening. And that is not because we haven't been working to make it happen. We have schools around us, and, and the superintendent was very good about explaining to me the difference between Remote Plus and hybrid. We have districts around us that were hybrid, and now they're back in school. We have, there are kindergartens, like, there are elementary schools that have been in school since September 21st, and they're hybrid, which means that they were partially at school and partially at home. As opposed to what we had elected to do, which was remote learning, have high-risk, high-needs students go into the stu, go into schools, and then see how it is from there, and are we ready to move forward to the next step? It's October 14th, and we don't even have those students in the schools. And in fact, we're arguing about who's going to sit with them sometimes. Or not arguing. I'll say there's some things on the table. It's offensive to me.
Member Ekstrom, in the interest of time, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up. Do you have any other?
All right, so here, so here's my point. I think that at this point, this is me, I would like to see all of our high-needs students and high-risk students back in the schools somehow. I also think that we need to talk about. I also think that we need to talk about, because this is a pandemic and we can alter our plans for whatever it is, and again, this is a discussion, for what we think is appropriate. I think it would be appropriate for us to get our kids back into the, into the preschool because as the superintendent mentioned earlier, we do have the rooms, and that's an ideal place to start with hybrid or with hybrids or with having people back in school. And I think we start with kindergarteners because those are the two groups that are having the hardest time sort of independently teaching or independently learning and take more hands on time and structure. I am, I, so, and so that's what I'd like to see. And I'm really offended that we aren't there yet, and I know how hard everyone is working, except maybe not quite so much. I think there might be some other reasoning that has nothing to do with the GEA, and I'm offended and frustrated with it on a regular basis. And honestly, I'm, I, I don't know that I can continue, and I'm saying this out loud because I need feedback from everyone, I don't know that I can continue to do this negotiation. Because there is so much obfuscation and avoidance of the elephant in the room, and as typically happens when I open my mouth, appropriate or not, or not appropriately worded, no one ever has any responses for me. And I'm not asking hard questions. I just want to know, you know, what's it going to take to do X? No response. Why don't we have these people in schools? No response. And I'm tired of it, and I'm really frustrated, and I. So there is. Thank you.
I'm going to move on to the mayor.
Thank you for stopping me.
Mayor Wiedegartner.
Yes, and now I'm not exactly sure what to say. I, I hear the passion that Susan is expressing, both as a parent and a school committee member. And I was there once, and I understand how hard that is to be an independent voice on the school committee, but also advocate for your child and, and the rest of the children in the schools. And it concerns me greatly that the great team did all their work to create this program that we call Remote Learning Remote Plus. And I signed on to it, and I voted in favor of it because I, I was respectful of all the work they'd put into it, and it seemed like a really good way for us to approach it. I guess I assumed at that time that there had been communication with our bargaining units, and they were reasonably okay with that, but it doesn't sound like that's the case now, and it sounds as, or if it was the case then, but something has changed. So it troubles me greatly. Now, I will say this, I don't think we went back to work until, I mean, we went back to school until September 17, but somebody can create, can correct me if I'm wrong about that.
That's the right.
Yeah, we're not quite there yet, you know, we've got whatever until the end of the week. So, but the fact that the Remote Learning Remote Place is not in place yet fully, so apparently it's the, it part, the in-person learning part for our students in need troubles me greatly. And I am very, very, very disappointed to hear that the bargaining units are, it sounds to me from Susan's, and I have not attended any of those meetings, so I cannot speak beyond what she has said, but it sounds to me as if there are concerns that they may have that do not support this plan. Quite frankly, I, I, my, my, my preference would have been for something that was akin more to hybrid learning, but I thought this was a good compromise given our district and our needs. But we are now almost a month into this, and we don't have remote plus, and I'm wondering why not? And I think every school committee member should be asking, why not? And they should not rest until they get an answer for that. And if there are good reasons for that, then I'm, I'm willing to be open to listening to them. But at this point in time, I would like us to almost be considering how we move into phase two, not whether or not we can even complete phase one in a timely manner. So this is very disappointing to me. And it's not exactly what I was going to say, but it's almost exactly what I was going to say. I wanted to know when we were going to move into the additional phase, and if there had been some thinking and thought process, and if need be negotiating towards that phase. But it doesn't even sound like we've even gotten off the dime on phase one, so I am not pleased.
Thank you, mayor. And Superintendent Harper, before I move on to the next school, can you remember, did you want to say something here? You're looking like you do.
I can wait until after the next committee member comments.
So we have two. We have member Karen and then member Holland. Do you still want to wait? Okay, member Karen, please, go ahead.
Hi, so many thoughts. Okay, so my first thought is, how can we make this move? And I know that, yes, we're talking about that this is held up in negotiations, but if we as a school committee make a statement that we believe our special needs students, our kindergarteners, and our preschoolers should be in a building on November 1st, I'm pulling a date out of the air, would that make a statement that makes the negotiations easier? Because we are clear that we have a set expectation, and that if that expectation cannot be met, then we're going to be looking to the next step. That's thought number one. Number two is, I was on that great team, and I, I don't remember who said it, but an important part, point was made about how they were, I think it was mayor, that said she was surprised that negotiations hadn't begun before the great team finished their work, or at least not conversations happening. I think the important part of that is people on the great team on different levels and in different roles are in those negotiations happening. So a lot, almost, most of the people were aware of the situation. So I'm not sure that we need to have a specific bargaining conversation necessarily, but they were aware. And it felt to me, from the people on the great team, that everybody was on board. So that was a lot of work, a lot of work, and for it to be held up is frustrating, and I can hear Susan's frustration. And I don't know how I can be best supportive, and if that means I jump in and listen to those meetings, or step in to fulfill a second negotiator role, or whatever it means, I want to do that because that is a lot of work, and it's a lot of burnout, and it needs the support to get it done. Because we have many students that this is not working the best for, and we need to be doing our job as a school committee to making sure education is going at the appropriate level to every child. I am not saying that people aren't working really hard. I'm not, I have no idea, I've not been in any of those meetings, I don't know what's happening exactly. But it's important that we're all working towards a common goal, and whatever we can do as a committee to make that happen needs to start now.
Susan, can I make one quick comment? Jordana, I think I know what you're going to say.
Is it really, really quick?
Yeah, it is.
Go ahead.
I want, I do want to say that, yes, I am here being frustrated and saying we need to get moving. I also want to say that it takes planning and time to move to things. So if we say we want to be in phase three in three weeks, all the things that have to enable buildings, all of the transportation, there are nine million things that need to happen before you can actually do that. However, we need to do some moving. Am I kind of, Jordana, I just hit it on the head a little bit. I want to remind everyone of that, and I'm, I'm more conscious of that than most people, I think, just in general. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Chair, could I weigh in? Oh, was there another committee member? I can wait.
Go ahead.
There was. I don't remember every detail of the great team, but I'd like to say that what's happening in Greenfield and all over the country, and if not the world, it's fluid. So whatever the best laid plan is, people are having to make, recommend, you know, changes and think about things. But what I want to say is, I think the burden on Susan is too great. This isn't a single issue like just negotiating, this is the entire educational program of our entire school system. And every, everyone we hire, because that's what we're about, is educating students. And I think we should not discuss this only at school committee, it's too important, there's too many details to put this on the back of one person. And so my recommendation would be to really create a subcommittee if the great team are compromised, because some are working or some are, whatever those issues are, and to really back up Susan and give this some more muscle in terms of recommendations. I just think it's too big to be resting on one person's back. It isn't typical negotiation, it's the entire education program of our entire system. And, and one thing about a subcommittee, they can go into executive session and talk about these contractual issues that are bogging it down, and that's my thought. It's, I think we need to be more supportive than, give it more attention than it's getting, and we're, we're constrained just talking about it at a school committee, that's my thought.
Good, I want to, so Jordana, before you go in, I want to be quick. Thank you, Susan. I appreciate that. That's a great thought. I want to also be clear that Jordana has been really good at conducting these negotiations and has probably talked me off the ledge more than once or twice a day. And, well, once or twice a time when we're conducting negotiations. And so I do want, I, I want to be clear that that, all of those, that sort of that supportive group is happening, it's just, I'm, I'm losing it with all of the ridiculous things that go on. Anyway, okay, Jordana, I'm done.
My turn. Go ahead. Okay, so first, a couple of clarifications. First, it is not accurate that there's only one school committee member on the negotiating team. So member Ekstrom and member Johnson Musad are on the negotiating team. So there is a second school committee member. These scheduled negotiating sessions are very frequent, and they're often scheduled, you know, during the meeting, we set, you know, the next several meetings, so it's not possible for every person on both sides to attend every meeting. But members Johnson, Musad, and Ekstrom are very much often both present. The second is, I really want to encourage you all to take use of executive session for the purpose of strategy related to collective bargaining, to have discussions about collective bargaining. I, I think there is some limited value in a public discussion about negotiations. So while I understand there are strong feelings on all sides of this, because it is important to our students and our teachers and our parents in the community, I really want to encourage that that's an avenue that's available to the committee. And I do just want to say that member Ekstrom's entitled to her perspective and an opinion, and other people may have a different perspective and opinion. So I just want to caution folks from taking too much one way or the other from this, because there actually has been quite a lot of movement within, there's a lot of work to be done. So I don't, I don't mean to say this to defend one side or the other, because I think we all want to see our kids back in school. So I want to be clear about that. But at the same time, I want to be clear that there's a lot of work getting done, and there's a lot of work going into these. That's all I want to say. So I don't want to jeopardize any future movement either. I think that's one of the, my goals in that if our goal is everybody safely returning to the buildings in the plan that the committee voted, let's make use of tools available to us to make sure that we continue on that goal.
This is Katie. I'd like to speak again. I promise to keep it brief.
Just member Karen, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify what I meant. I believe in our town, in our employees, in our schools, and I believe that everyone wants what's best for everyone. I really was trying to get to the point of, if we pick a date, even if it's a reasonable date that we're all working towards, I think it helps sometimes. Not all the time, sometimes it's pressure and sometimes it's not great. But if we are all working towards a goal on a specific date of whatever happening, then we know that while we're doing the negotiating, we can be working on transportation and also ensuring that our HVAC is up to systems or whatever. But without a specified date, it sort of is just, well, as soon as we get it done, we can do it. And that can lead to stress on everybody of when it's going, when's that going to be? I know committing to a date is difficult large because if, for some reason it falls apart, then you have an entire community angry, so I certainly don't want to do that. But I just think that, and I think Superintendent was right, that we should be having a lot of this conversation so we can be more clear in executive session.
This is the mayor. I'd like to speak as well, assuming I'm not taking some of Susan's time, because I thought she wanted to speak again, but maybe I'm wrong.
Member Holland, did you want to speak again? And then the mayor can go. You're muted. Did you have more you wanted to speak on, member Holland?
I've thought of making a motion, but I, I'd like to hear from the mayor.
Okay, the mayor, and then we'll come back to you if need be. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I agree with Superintendent and with member Karen that we have touched on the edge of what should be done in executive session here tonight, and so I don't think we need to belabor that point anymore. We can plan, you know, we have one after this, but I'm sure it's on something else. But strategy is very appropriate, and I think we may be at that point. I'm optimistic, from what Jordana has said, that some movement has come forward, and I think I recognize that Susan's opinions were her own, as she recognized herself. But there's no substitute for the person in the room, and she sees it the way she sees it. So I, I would recommend that we do an executive session on this topic very soon, so perhaps at the next meeting in the quote-unquote "short two weeks" that you're talking about. But I think that the executive session should focus on this, because if we are, are having progress, but we're not there yet, and we're a month into this, we need to have a strategy for how we get through the entire recommendations on a reasonably good schedule that the, that the great team has put forward. And I, one, have appreciated their work on it, and, two, I appreciate the work of member Johnson Musad and Susan Ekstrom for sitting through those meetings and doing their part to participate. So I would like very much for us to consider doing that. At the same time, I, I do think it's important that we, well, I think I just said that, that we chart the course to move forward.
Yes, I do have a follow-up comment.
Member Holland, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that when we passed the original plan, I don't think we had the information at that time on how many members of our personnel have reasons to, for not returning for some allowable reason. We didn't have that information, and I, and I don't know if the plan that we had needs to be reviewed based on some more information that's come in on who's retired or who's here, who has whatever, in addition to student issues. And I think it might be okay to ask that that plan be reviewed based on more current information. I agree with what everyone's saying. I agree with the mayor bringing this up so we can have a more full discussion. But I wouldn't mind if we went back and looked at the plan with, with the nuance of new information, because maybe the plan needs to have options within the options based on faculty information, personal information. That's my thought. Thank you.
Chair.
Sure. Chair. Sure. Superintendent, please, go ahead.
Okay, so one, two things. The first is, I want to be very clear that in many, many public situations, we said, here is the plan, and it is just that. It is a plan. We don't know the course of COVID. We don't know what student enrollment will look like. We don't know, teachers may retire or make choices that have to do with their own families. There are a lot of unknowns. This is our plan. As best we know it, we're asking you to vote on what you think is the best, knowing that nobody has a crystal ball. We were also very clear that it was subject to collective bargaining. It's, I believe it's written right in the plan. It's, it's just state law. There's not, there's nothing, there's nothing magical about that. And the Department of Education guidance told us to do it this way. They said, bring your plan without public input or discussion to your school committee, vote a plan, and then bargain it. And I spent much of my summer saying, how on earth does that make any sense? And that's what we did, because that's what we had to do. And, and we're in the midst of that. So I don't want to, I don't want anybody to feel like we've somehow failed our mission. We're doing exactly what we said we were going to do and set out to do. And people are working very hard to do it. So I want to make that clear, that while some people might want for us to be faster in person, some people might want for us never to go in person, which is right where we were in August when we voted this plan. It is an impossible situation, and everyone is not going to be pleased, no matter what you do. One tool that the committee has at, at your disposal in terms of an action you could take tonight is, it would be helpful to those of us in the administration if you said, at our next meeting, we would like a full report on the status of our readiness to implement Phase Two, as an example. So if you gave me that much lead time to go back and assess, here's where the HVAC systems are, here's the status. If you all said to me, I want you in buildings tomorrow, I would say, I'm sorry, I can't do that. I don't have HVAC results that tell me it's safe to be back in the buildings. We had some rooms that had no airflow, because there was a motor, a small part in a motor that was broken that wasn't circulating it. And that needs to be corrected. It's being done, but you want that information before we begin. So if you said, bring me a report of our readiness, I could say, this is ready, this is ready, this is ready, this is not ready. And we're doing all of that work, but we could bring forward to you all. So you're empowered to make a decision. And knowing that negotiations will continue, and that process is running simultaneously. And that way, you, you all and the public both have a clear sense of where we are and where we're headed. We'll be looking at public health data, the readiness of the buildings. The personnel information that Member Hollins mentioned is very important. Our updated enrollment, that's all part of the picture. So rather than redoing the whole plan, if, if you're interested in that next step, I'd be happy to bring back a sort of summary report of where we are. And if it looks like all systems go, that's great. If it looks like, you know, we still have snags in, let's say, HVAC or something related, you all need to know that as well.
I have a question.
Member Johnson Musad, go ahead.
So that report would be on current readiness for hybrid learning? Is that, is that what you were recommending, Superintendent Harper?
You can ask for a report on anything you'd like. I can tell you, we will not be ready to implement hybrid learning in two weeks, because our plan is not for a hybrid plan. It's a remote plus plan at this point. But if you were interested in readiness for Phase Two, as an example, just because it's the next phase to go to, we could give you a report at that point. I think that's within the authority of the committee. Doesn't negate collective bargaining. And you can still take actions that are available to you at that point, including any strategy that results from any executive session discussion.
I have a motion.
Shoot.
I move that the superintendent present, present a report on the current readiness for Phase Two at our next meeting.
Second.
There was a second from Member Ekstrom. Discussion?
Plan is, would you consider adding to that including any modifications of the original great plan that are needed now? Or would that be subsumed by your motion?
I think it would be subsumed, but I think it's good that it's noted in the, in the discussion for this item, that I think the superintendent can take that to heart.
It, it could be part of the discussion in executive session.
Further discussion or questions? Okay, so let's, let's move to a vote.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Rita Gardner?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for that. Is that enough discussion and movement to close out that topic? I think it is, but would anyone else want to address anything further?
I think I support what you think.
Okay, so we will move on, considering it's quarter after eight. We are on to Item C under New Business, Anti-Racism and the School Resource Officer Funding. And I think that Member Johnson Musad had agreed to give us an overview and kind of set up the discussion for us.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Poiety. So back in June, George Floyd was killed in an event that was televised and broadcast. And it upset many people. It woke us up from our, woke many of us up about racism and wanting to do more. Two items came out of that in terms of school committee business.
Oh, my God.
Chair Poiety, if you don't mind muting other, other folks.
Sorry about that.
So, let's see. So two items came out of that, in our discussions as a, as a committee. One of those was the School Resource Officer Funding. And, well, one of them was the School Resource Officer position. And the other was drafting an anti-racism statement. So taking those in order, the School Resource Officer, we directed the superintendent to discuss with the police department not having an active School Resource Officer in the schools. Nothing was done with the, with the funding that was allocated for that in the budget. But the, we had directed the superintendent to essentially withdraw from having a School Resource Officer actively in the schools. We also agreed to form a committee that would draft an anti-racism statement. We did not state at the time what form that committee would take. And we, we, the chair was to designate two members to be on that committee. And those folks have yet to be formally designated. So, so that's kind of the history. It's, I guess, the other, the other piece in the packets for tonight's meeting are the, is a presentation from the Masque, Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And that's just a little bit of context for a refresher for us and a reminder to the community about what our role really is as school committee members, that we don't actually get involved in directing specific programming, but more setting goals and, and helping to determine policy in order to achieve, in order to reach our responsibility, which is student achievement. And so in the packet, it kind of talks about, our job is to have a vision of high expectations, focus on accountability, foster strong relationships, use data to monitor progress, lead as a united team, and build collaboration trust and respect. That we set goals and monitor progress. We have varied and purposeful meetings that are focused on student achievement. We govern ourselves. We're involved in professional development and have a strong relationship with our superintendent. And then there's kind of a graphic on page seven that kind of outlines, you know, essentially that the, the committee sets the ends or the results that we're trying to achieve in terms of missions and vision, goals, policy, and budget. The superintendent establishes the means, the strategies, action plans, regulations, procedures. So that's all just kind of a reminder in some context in thinking about race and racism and racial justice and how we, as a school committee, might set goals and policies in, in that direction. So I think that, in terms of context, I think there's kind of three, three items for us tonight related to this. One is Chair Poiety to appoint members to be on this committee. And the other is perhaps to get greater clarity of what type of committee this is and what its, what its charge is in terms of the, the committee that we discussed related to coming up with an anti-racism statement. And then finally, whether there's discussion or any motions related to this, the funding for the School Resource Officer position. There's a lot, been a lot of community interest in designating those funds for racial justice activities in the schools.
Thank you, Member Johnson Musad. That was an excellent overview. Do we have, I think we should try to start with a motion. You kind of had some sections to what you were proposing, and I think that would help guide the discussion. And you and I had spoke about something potential. Do you want to try with that and see where it goes?
Sure. I move that the committee established to draft an anti-racism statement be structured as an advisory committee. And that this advisory committee, in dialogue with the community, also draft a recommended scope of anti-racism work for consideration by the school committee.
And do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Tell me who that was. Was that Member Karen?
Ekstrom.
Member Ekstrom.
I seriously cannot tell you to a part of, so sorry. Member Ekstrom with the second. Let's discuss.
I can start with kind of what the thinking is behind this. Essentially, that an advisory committee structure would allow us to actually involve community members and other stakeholders in the advisory committee, school, school representatives, community members, et cetera. So in that way, it may be more in line with what we're seeking in terms of racial justice, in terms of seeking a broader representation and diversity of opinions and identities, perhaps. And also, I think there, it was implied in our discussion from the June meeting that there was going to be a discussion of next steps. But I think explicitly having it not just be a statement that gets drafted, but also a scope of work essentially would, would be useful and reassuring to the community.
Other comments or discussion question from the school committee?
Comment?
Member Hollins, go ahead.
I agree with Member Johnson Musad. But I don't think a statement is what I would recommend. I would recommend that we have a policy and a goal. And following that, we could talk about what's the work of implementing the policy? What's our expectation? I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel. I've been looking at school districts on the West Coast, particularly in the Northwest. And there's already so many wonderful policy statements and goal statements for school committees. And I think your statements, anyway, I think we should just have a goal and a policy on racial justice. But I agree with the direction.
Other comments, questions?
I just would like to comment.
Mayor Rita Gardner, go ahead.
Well, if, if the role of the, if the role of the school committee is to set education goals, and this is a teaching moment, more than one, then I think we can certainly do that. And I think that's something that we could legitimately work on as a school committee together, whether it's in the advisory committee or otherwise. And the other piece is the budgetary piece that is also within our purview. So if there is a need at the end of this discussion to appropriate some level of funding beyond the funding that was in the budget originally for the SRO, then that would be something that would be appropriate for us to do too. And I, I haven't heard yet, and I would, I guess I would like to hear tonight, what happened to the money that was in there for the SRO. If I'm, if I missed it, then I apologize. But I don't know that we even know what there is available. But I guess where I'm going is the goals of this are, I agree with what Johnson, Member Johnson Musad said. And I think we need to begin to work on this. I just want us to do it within what's appropriate for our role. And I will caution again, there are seven of us. So an advisory committee, I think, is a, is a good thing, because we can involve many members of the community who may be, who are, I know, interested in this, as well as school committee members. So it doesn't have to be all of us working, all of us members of the school committee working. Just, just involving other people in the community, which I think is very appropriate.
Thank you, Mayor. Other, Member Wall, please.
I think that it would be a wonderful thing to have an advisory committee. And there are so many community members who have been doing work on this for quite a long time. And it would, rather than our trying to invent the wheel, I think it would be helpful to have those people advise us on the thoughts that they have to support this completely and totally. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Wall. Other discussion? I'm going to remind the community, the chat is not for comments. The chat is to remain completely empty. Other discussion from the school committee?
As part of this discussion, I guess, so what is it that we're talking about? Because what, and clarify for me, because what the push has been from the community is that the money that was allocated for an SRO be used to develop programs for racial equality and justice type education.
Yeah, I think I can speak to that. Just that this is the first of, I mean, I think I mentioned there's kind of three different parts.
That's fine. I just wanted to see where we were.
Yep. So we're on this. We also have the appointment of, of members to the committee. And then we have the budget piece to discuss.
Excellent. Thank you, Glenn. Budget piece is not a part of the motion that we're talking about right now. There is nothing in that motion.
That's correct.
About the budget.
That's correct.
Okay. Other, other comments, questions, discussion from the school committee? I have a couple of things. I want to make sure everyone else is done though first. Okay, so I will happily appoint school committee members to this advisory committee. Please email me and let your, let me know your interest. And we will do those appointments if this motion passes at the next meeting. And then I'm, I'm struggling with this, the scope of the work piece, which I know will be a part of the, of the... part of the advisory committee. And what I'm struggling with is our school district is an inherently racist system. That's what it is, and it's how it was established. And to put programming on top of an inherently racist system is not the most effective way to rebuild that system as an anti-racist system. I would be much more interested in finding funding and finding solutions that fix the system, that don't sprinkle programming on top of an inherently racist system. That, to me, just sounds more patriarchal than I probably want to admit. We have never done a, that I'm aware of, we have never hired a consultant to identify for us how to hire staff that look like our students. We have never used our funds to break down the pieces of the system that are racist. And that's what I'm interested in. What I'm hearing from the emails we've gotten, from the community discussion around this, is all very well-intentioned, but as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't go far enough. And the other thing that I will say, and I'm aware that this is beyond the scope of the motion that's on the table, when we cut $1.8 million to meet the mayor's budget, we did not leave on the table $30,000 for the School Resource Officer. I need to be very clear about that because I really, really don't, it's not how budgets work, and that's not how any of this is going to work. We did not, we don't have $30,000 sitting there to be reassigned. And I need the community to hear that. And that's the last thing I'll say, and then we'll move on.
Chair Prayeti, I have a response.
Please.
First, respectfully, I urge you to appoint at least one committee member to this advisory board tonight. We voted in June for this, for the committee to be established and for you to appoint someone. And I think that, given, if it is structured as an advisory committee, I mean, I know I emailed you to express interest in this. You could appoint me, and I could involve community members, and we could loop in additional committee members in the future if we wanted. But I just want to encourage you on that front.
Sure. Point noted. Thank you.
And then I'll also say that I have had the opportunity to learn in depth about one of the programs. I mean, I think different community members have written with different ideas. Just to say that one of them in particular sounded like it was talking about exactly what you're discussing, like how to have a youth-led, but community-involved discussion or work on the kind of the more systemic issues that you're discussing. So I just want to say that that's definitely a possibility we can pursue.
Let's see if we, further discussion, questions, comments?
Comment?
Member Hollins, go ahead.
And then so does the mayor after Member Hollins.
Okay.
I agree with your comments, Chair Prayeti. If we want to deal with systemic issues of school culture, I might describe it differently. I've been online for several hours looking at the demographics of each of our schools over 15 years. They have demographics by race, blah, blah, blah. But I think if we want to do something systemic about culture, it needs to be a goal to address cultural issues. And one of the things that was really interesting to me, looking at Portland, is there's a whole hour of their consultant reviewing how to make systemic change in the school district. I don't think the role of the school committee is to direct what programs the administration's going to use. I feel pretty comfortable that's not our role. It doesn't offend me at all that there's a committee that's really talking about this aggressively. But I think as a school committee, we really need to get a goal to address systemic change, particularly looking at these issues and possibly having a consultant to work with us on how to make that change within the school. All we can do is really set goals and expectations. So I'm inclined to agree with you that that's the approach for us. Thank you. Let's see.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Mayor Rita Gardner, go ahead.
I was just going to say.
You froze, Mayor.
What did you say?
I didn't hear anything you said. Go ahead. Say it again.
Oh, okay.
You froze.
Oh, interesting. I didn't, I wasn't aware of that, watching the video here. I am not aware, if Member Johnson Musad mentioned it, I missed that piece, but I'm not aware that we have a sense of who this advisory committee, beyond a school committee member and members of the community, but who are those members of the community? Not specific names, I'm just saying. Do we have an idea of what, I mean, certainly, parents and parents of children of color are extremely important to have on it. Do we have an idea of how many, who, and so forth and so on? And if not, who is going to be responsible for, beyond you as chair, going to be responsible for attempting to create this committee? That's all very procedural, and perhaps this is not, certainly not, right now, the time to discuss it. But just minding everyone, saying we want and passing a motion that we want to have an advisory committee is one thing. But how do people let us know? How do people have input into how the advisory committee ought to be put together? So that's the only thing that I need to say at this point. I certainly support the comments that you made earlier, Chair Prayeti. So I'm just wanting us to make sure that if we're going to do this and we vote to do it, that we actually get it done and it has a structure.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the committee?
I've spoken a few times, but if no one else wants to speak.
Go ahead.
Just that the, you know, we have a, we have policy on advisory committees, and it kind of lists the items that advisory committees need to have. But it's kind of a chicken or the egg thing. An advisory committee could also play a role in making a recommendation to the school committee of how those questions should be answered. So that was what I was trying to get at in my motion, was that the advisory committee would both draft this statement, but also draft a scope of work, which could also include all the details that the advisory committee requires the school committee to charge them with.
Thank you, Member Johnson Musad. Other questions, comments, discussion from the school committee?
This is Member Karen.
Go ahead.
I really agree with everything that's being said. I believe that this is an important thing for us to do and work towards and get community involvement. And I also believe that this is a tiny drop in a much larger problem that we need to address, and that it's important that we don't just say, okay, we made this committee, and we're going to done this, and we made a statement, and we're listening to members, that we really do use our money, what little we have at this point, to go to the root of the problem. It's the same as everything in our society. Money speaks, and we have to put money towards it. I also agree with you, Amy, that the SRO money is not just sitting there. The SRO is still mandated by the state for us to have, and it's fine that we got rid of it, but it also mandates that we have a truancy officer. So there are things in our budget that we have to do by state date, and we have to be careful that we do those things. And otherwise, state money may not show up in our budget. So I think that, I like the plan of reallocating the money, but I don't know that that's the right way to go. I was just going to save that for the budget part of this conversation, but I think we're kind of encompassing it all at the moment.
I appreciate that perspective. And just so, as a reminder, that no budgetary consideration is a part of the motion that's on the table. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Okay, so we've moved to a vote, and I'm not going to bother Susan Farber, but I will read what I believe is the motion again. The motion is move that the committee established to draft an anti-racism statement be structured as an advisory committee, and that this advisory committee, in dialogue with the community, also draft a recommended scope of anti-racism work for consideration by the school committee. And Member Johnson Musad, would you do a roll call for us, please?
Yes. Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Exstrom?
Yep, yes.
Okay. Member Hollins?
You're on mute, Member Hollins.
I'm uncomfortable with how the motion's worded, so I'll abstain.
Secretary Johnson, I'm E.S. Chair Prayeti.
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Rita Gardner?
Yes.
All right. Great.
Wonderful. So the motion passes. I will, at this point, appoint Member Johnson Musad as a school committee member on the Anti-Racism Advisory Committee. Maybe you want to come up with a different name. I don't know.
I'll take that under the charge.
Yeah, yeah. And I will appoint another member, but I'm not prepared to do that at this time.
Great.
But I certainly would take emails of interest from folks.
And I have a motion related to the budget item that we're discussing.
Okay, go ahead.
Let's see. I move that $15,000 be allocated to the high school for racial justice programs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Speaking to it, I think it, you know, related to Member Karen's concerns about, you know, needing to keep, perhaps keep that line item in our budget, but also wanting to make some financial commitment towards racial justice work happening in the schools beyond what's already happening. And I guess I'll also speak to that. I think that it might be good for us at some point to have this superintendent give a report to us on all the great racial justice work that's already happening in the public schools. I think there's a lot more going on than many people may recognize. But I think making a financial commitment to this work, along with the kind of planning commitment that we've made tonight, makes a lot of sense, and that's kind of an interesting symbolic amount. I think that it's connected to the amount that we used to have for the School Resource Officer.
Other discussion?
Just to comment, I'd be happy to provide a report, a summary, sort of initiatives currently in place, and also initiatives that are planned as we've made commitments to intensify our work in this area.
Comment?
Member Hollins, go ahead.
I support the motion, but we have other schools where these are issues of concern. And if we're going to look at systemic culture, it's not just about programs at the high school. So I think, you know, again, my pitch is we have to do training, but we have to look at our resource materials that our children are being, you know, using every day and boost our allocation, even if it's by $500 per school, for materials that address this topic with other younger children. Thank you.
Other discussion?
Me.
I'm going to guess that's Member Exstrom.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So what I've really struggled with, with all of this, is allocating specifically money that had been previously determined to be for the SRO. When I think about this, I just, I don't understand. What's the goal here? Is the goal a symbol, or is the goal to actually do something? People want something actually done. Why does it matter where the money comes from? This is about teaching our students and the community about racial equality. A symbol doesn't do anything. I've, you know, you can have symbols all day long, but if nothing actually happens, it doesn't really matter. If we're going to teach people, what we teach them is it doesn't matter where the money comes from. If you want to learn this, we're going to make it possible for you to learn this. And we want you to understand that, systemically, there are a lot of problems, and we need to have open discussion about this. And if the money comes from, I don't know, leftover transportation, so be it. And I'm not saying it can, and I'm not saying that's an appropriate analogy, but specifically targeting one piece of the budget, and I'm going to echo the chair in saying that's not how budgets work, when you are at this sort of level and it's public funding, it's, be thankful. I just, I'm, be thankful that people are saying, I agree, we're going to do some funding for this. If you want to pinpoint a specific spot, then you're not so thankful. You're demanding that something happens the way you want it to happen, and you don't really care about the comment. That's my personal opinion, and so that's that.
This is Member Karen. I would like to speak.
Go ahead, Member Karen.
I think that, yes, it can be symbolic, and it could be really, a really good symbol, and I understand what you're saying. But I think possibly it's just a clear place that people realize the budget without actually understanding what may have happened to that money. In this sense, we eliminated that position. They know that there was money there that has no longer, for a position that no longer exists, so it was really easy to latch onto. Yes, it could be symbolic, but I think it just was very clearly, oh, hey, they eliminated this position, they don't need to refill it, so there's this money, and it would be really great to use it for this other thing.
Other questions, discussion, comments?
I think it's, can I speak?
Please, Member Wall. You don't speak enough, as far as I'm concerned. Go ahead.
I think it's more important that the group that meets finds a use for money and then comes back to the school committee and says, we need this money for this purpose, and we discuss it in that context, not do it as a symbol of anything.
Thank you, Member Wall. Other comments, discussion, questions? I will say, it sounds like we're ready to go to a vote. I will just quickly say, I will not be voting for this. I do not think that this is how we should. Oops. Okay, Member Johnson Musad, if you would do a roll call vote, please.
Chair Prayeti, I think we unfortunately missed your comments because the video froze for a second, so you may want to repeat what you were going to say.
Oh, I didn't realize that. Okay, sure. Thank you. I just was going to say that, I did say that I will not be voting for this. This isn't how budgets work, and I don't think that this is the way we want to get off with what I think is a very strong advisory committee model and a very well-intentioned structure for making real change. To be honest, if we were going to spend $15,000 on anything, let's put that towards superintendent search that is nationwide and looks for candidates who have, as someone mentioned in public comment, candidates that have real commitment to anti-racist education. That money would be much better spent there, and that's why I'm going to vote no on this.
Could I hear the motion again?
Yes. The motion was that $15,000 be allocated to the high school for racial justice programs.
And let's go to a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Member Karen?
Can you skip me for a second, please?
Vice Chair Exstrom. Vice Chair Extrem. Are you on mute?
No, I'm not. Uh, I'm going to say no, because I'd rather that we take a look across the system as opposed to just at the high school. I think learning happens earlier than that.
Um, I, I think, I, I just want to make a point of order, that when we're voting, we just get to vote yes or no, like discussion is over.
You're right, you're right.
Um, Member Hollins?
I'll vote no.
Secretary Johnson, I'm a yes. Chair Prayety?
No.
Um, Member Wall?
No.
Mayor Weidergartner?
No.
Uh, Member Karen?
Yes.
Uh, two yeses, the motion does not carry.
I think that is the first motion that has not passed in, in my time as chair, and I don't know how I feel about that, but I, I will say that it's a very, it's clearly a very, uh, a, a subject we all care a lot about, and a subject that we all need to do some real work on, just like everyone else in, in Greenfield. Let's keep doing the work, and let's have some ongoing commitment to this.
Could I make a comment as well?
This is Susan Farber. I need some clarification, please.
Let's do Susan Farber first, please.
Okay. Um, just to let you know, I've been having a hard time most of the evening to hearing some members, especially Member Karen. I don't know how Members Karen, Wall, and Weidergartner voted.
I'll, I'll go through the roll call and let you know who voted, how people voted. Member Karen voted yes. Vice Chair Extrem voted no. Member Hollins voted no. I voted yes. Chair Prayety voted no. Member Wall voted no. And Mayor Weidergartner voted no.
Thank you very much.
Comment?
Um, I heard, before that, I heard two people that wanted to comment. I know, Member Hollins, you were one. I did not catch who the other one was.
Mayor Weidergartner.
Okay, and then just you two, and then we're going to wrap this up, because we have gone on long enough before, we still have to do executive session.
Yeah.
So please, make it succinct.
Is it possible to make a second motion that addresses this, a different motion?
Um.
If so, this is what it would be, and then you decide. For the Budget Subcommittee, in bringing back recommendations for the FY21 budget, include adjustments for racial and social justice.
Um, I certainly don't have a problem with that. I feel like it's solution-oriented, and I would entertain a second. Okay, so we have a motion from Member Hollins, with a second from Member Johnson Musad, and it is.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Yes.
I have most of it, but not all.
For the Budget Subcommittee, in bringing back recommendations for the FY21 budget, include adjustments for racial and social justice. Initiatives, or something.
Susan Farber, do you have what you need now?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay. So let's move to discussion.
Member Weidergartner would like to speak.
Gartner, go ahead.
So I didn't speak to the last one, even though I was second in line, so I just wanted everyone on the call to know that a vote of no does not mean that we don't support the idea. A vote of no meant that we don't support that specific motion. Second, I want everyone on the, the school committee to understand that while Member Johnson Musad said that the votes are yes or no, up or down, it is totally appropriate for school committee members or any other members of a voting body to explain their vote prior to voting. So it doesn't have to be a long-winded explanation. It can simply be why they are voting no, why they're voting yes, why they're abstaining. So I would prefer it if future votes are taken, and whenever anyone wants to explain why they're voting the way they are, that they should be allowed at least, you know, 30 seconds or 40 seconds to do that.
I think, I think that, I think the nod mainly is to the remote format with that. It's very difficult to organize everything once we've moved to a roll call vote. I would encourage school committee members that if they want to stress how they're going to vote, they do that before we close discussion and move to the roll call vote. That's all.
Hmm, that's, that's, uh, okay. Then I'll, I'll accept that, but I just wanted to make those comments. The third thing I wanted to say with regard to this is, if we have an advisory committee forming or formed or at some point, I, I think it's more appropriate, uh, at some point for them to come forward to us and give us an idea of what their recommendations are before we try to establish a budget number for '21 that may or may not be adequate. So I think we need to hear from this advisory committee. That's what they're there for. Their recommendations for the advisory, to us, may well yield a different result in terms of how much funding we might need to bring this about.
Other discussion, questions, comments? Okay, so it sounds like, oh, who's that? Yes, no, maybe? Okay, so it sounds like we're ready to move to a vote.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Prayety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner?
Could I hear the motion again before I vote, please?
For the Budget Subcommittee, in bringing back recommendations on the FY21 budget, include recommendations for racial and social justice.
Uh, no.
The motion carries.
Thank you all. I think that was a really important and pretty well-organized discussion, and I appreciate the thought everyone's putting into making all of this move forward. I believe.
This is Susan Farber again.
Please.
I'm sorry, I, I, certain members just are not coming through on my audio.
I'm sorry you're having trouble.
Chair Prayety, Chair Karen, I'm sorry, Member Karen and the mayor, I don't know how you voted.
I can help you, I can help you, Susan Farber.
Thank you.
It was all, all yeses, except Mayor Weidergartner voted no.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are at the end of our agenda with the exception of the executive session, which will, we will be calling according to Mass. General Ledger C30A, subsections 21, exemptions number two and three. Number two is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and I do declare. Do I have a, oh, a motion to, let's see, I don't, we will not need to come back to this, so, to the public session. So I need a motion to open the executive session, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay, so we've got, I think it was Member Karen and Member Hollins.
Extrem and Hollins.
Sorry, I, obviously, I can't tell the difference. And I think we can probably just move to a vote on that without any discussion, please. Please, please, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Prayety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. And now we'll do a motion to adjourn the public session of the meeting, please.
So moved. Ah, second. All the committee in unison.
We will, we will take a 10-minute break, so I can put my son to bed.
Thank you.
Wow. Put it down.
So we need a vote on that?
Yeah, please.
Amy, put your kid to bed.
All right. Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem?
Yep.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Prayety? Assuming that's a yes. Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner?
Yes.
All right.
Would someone share the link before we return?
Someone do that while I go.
Member Hollins, Member Hollins, I will, I will do that, but I would also like to make an appointment with you to help you figure out how to find the link yourself in the future.
I'm ending the meeting. I'll see you all in executive session in 10 minutes.